Take us two hours, but we have the time allotted if we need it. We'll go over welcome and introductions, give an overview of the grant opportunity, discuss the DOE federal compliance requirement examples, and go over the Georgia Georgia draft five-year program narrative and then have hopefully plenty of time for questions and comments. Kelly, can you go to the next slide? There we go. So also want to mention that we are accepting written comments to for this program as well. Any electronic comments will be accepted up until March seventeenth. So this week Friday, and they can be emailed to energyresources@gfa.gov and we'll take those comments up until four P M on Friday. A full copy of the draft program narrative is also available on our website, gifa dot georgia dot gov. Next slide. So for those who are on the video, if you can, please type in your name and organization into the chat so that we can capture who's joined us on the call. If you can include your email address and how you heard about this public hearing. And then we'd also ask you to please be muted until the end when we take public comments. So again, my name is Christopher Anderson. I'm the Director of Energy Resources here at GIFA. Also on the call, we have Kelly Cuts, our Senior Project Manager within the Energy Resources Division. Kelly has done really most all of the work on this program so far, and she will, after I give introduction, she'll take it over and run through the rest of the the public hearing. So just a brief overview, I think most people on the call probably know who we are, but of course, we're the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, we're a state of Georgia authority that funds energy, land, and water improvements across the state. Our Energy Resources Division is known as the state's Energy Office. And you know, we exist to promote energy efficiency, renewable energy and energy assistance programs across the state. We also operate the weatherization assistance program along with the state energy program, both funded by the Department of Energy and other programs, including the Energy Performance Contracting Program. We are the state of Georgia's Emergency Support Function twelve lead as well. And we also have the state's fuel storage tank program here at GIFA. And you can sign up for our mailing list as well from these slides or from our website. Next slide. So getting into, I just want to do a brief overview of where this funding is coming from. This funding, as you may know, is coming from the bipartisan infrastructure law or otherwise also known as the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of two thousand and twenty one, signed into law in November of two thousand and twenty one. This has created significant number of new U S Department of Energy programs, including this program, the Section four oh one oh one D Formula Grants to States and Indian Tribes for Preventing Outages and Enhancing the Resilience of the Electric Grid. You can find more about the opportunity at the National Energy Technology Lab portion of the DOE website. You can see on the link right there, or if you just Google DOE Section four oh one oh one D, it'll pull it up as well. And the ALRD is also posted. And you can see the FOA number as well there. So at this point, I'm going to hand it off to Kelly and Kelly is going to walk through what the four oh one oh one D program is and what our approach to that is, and then we'll get to the public comments as well. So again, thank you for joining our call today. And we look forward to taking your comments and your feedback, whether on the call today or via email as well through Friday. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Chris. And again, thank you all for joining us today. I think Chris mentioned, we don't think that this will take two hours this morning, but we wanted to allow enough time to go over the program, talk about Georgia's draft plan, and then allow time for any questions at the end or public comment. So the four oh one oh one D federal grid resilience goals from the federal level are to demonstrate measurable improvements and energy resiliency to all hazards in the U S and mitigate climate-related risk. To invest in a modernized grid infrastructure that can enable consumer access to lower-cost energy and accommodate increased electrification, increased penetrations of variable renewable electricity and distributed energy resources and other evolving system needs over the coming decades. The third goal is to invest in clean energy and decarbonization solutions to achieve a carbon-free power sector by two thousand and thirty five and net zero greenhouse gas emissions economy-wide by two thousand and fifty. And then the fourth one is to create good-paying jobs with the free and fair choice to join a union. Funding for this program is allocated to states and Indian tribes via an annual formula grant. There's approximately four hundred and fifty nine million allocated nationally per year from F Y twenty two through twenty six. A fifteen percent cost match for each allocation must be provided by each state and up to five percent of a state's allocation can be used for technical assistance, distribution of information to reduce the likelihood and consequence of disruptive events and administrative expenses associated with the program. The formula for determining each state's funding allocation is based on population, geographic area, probability of disruptive events, severity of disruptive events, and expenditure on mitigation efforts. So for the first year of this program, Georgia has been allocated eight million six hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And we have received our year two allocation notice that we will be receiving eight million six hundred and fifty five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. The Georgia Environmental Finance Authority was appointed as the statewide agency to oversee these funds. I'm going to take a little bit of time on this slide to allow folks to review the eligibility or the eligible entities for this funding. Again, I just want to remind everyone that this is being recorded and we are going to post the slide deck on our website this afternoon. So this will be available right after the the public hearing today. But for the purposes of implementing eligible resiliency measures that achieve the objectives of this program, the state will use grant funding to issue sub-awards to eligible entities, including an electric grid operator, electricity storage operator, electricity generator, transmission owner or operator, a distribution provider, fuel provider or fuel supplier. And then the last one is any other relevant entity as determined by the Secretary of the Department of Energy. Again, I'm going to allow some time. I know this is a busy slide. So we'll we'll pause here and let folks read through these. I'll go through some of them as well. But again, these slides will be posted on our website. Some examples of eligible activities for these for this program includes utility pole management, hardening of power lines, facilities, substations, undergrounding of electrical equipment, replacement of old overhead conductors and underground cables, relocation of power lines or reconductoring power lines with low sag advanced conductors, vegetation and fuel load management, weatherization technologies and equipment, fire-resistant technologies and prevention systems, monitoring and control technologies, the use or construction of distributed energy resources for enhancing system adaptive capacity during disruptive events, including micro grids and battery storage subcomponents, adaptive protection technologies and advanced modeling technologies. The funding can also be used for training, recruitment, retention, and reskilling of skilled and properly credentialed workers in order to perform resilience measures listed above. Some of the ineligible activities include the construction of new electric generating facilities or large-scale battery storage facilities and cybersecurity. There is a required recipient cost match with these funds. So as I mentioned, each state is required to match fifteen percent of the amount provided to the state. Any eligible entity that receives a subaward under this program will be required to match one hundred percent of the amount of the subaward. However, if the eligible entity doesn't sell more than four million megawatt hours of electricity per year, the required match will be one-third or thirty-three percent of the amount of the subaward. Furthermore, there's a small scale or a small utility set aside where Georgia will need to ensure that of the subawards, subawards provided to eligible entities, the percentage made available to eligible entities that sell not more than four million megawatt hours of electricity per year is not less than the percentage of all customers in the state served by those entities. And I'll get into that a little bit more when I go through our draft plan. This program also includes an equity requirement. So the Justice Forty Initiative was created by Executive Order fourteen zero zero eight, which establishes a goal that forty percent of the overall benefits of this program and many federal programs should flow to disadvantaged communities. DOE encourages states to use this funding to accelerate job growth and job quality, prioritize projects that generate the greatest community benefit in reducing the likelihood and consequence of disrupted events and include diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, hoping to reach historically underserved populations, racial minorities, and women. And GIFA will be inviting environmental justice organizations to join our statewide stakeholder groups as we plan this funding to help guide our process in reviewing applications. So as part of the equity approach, DOE has shared with states the White House Climate and Economic Justice Screening Tool. And there's many mapping tools available to define disadvantaged communities. This is an outstanding tool that allows you to zoom in to census track data, not only to see which communities are considered disadvantaged or overburdened, but it also breaks it down by type of burden. If you're into data, you can pull a spreadsheet and sort, you know, data by census tract county level and determine which type of burden is impacting that community most. If it's climate change, energy, energy, health, housing, transportation, legacy pollution, and a lot more. So this is just a list of the required application documents that GIFA must submit to DOE by March thirty first in order to obtain the formula funds. So this, the what we're working on now is a program narrative. Just wanted to make note that this does not list or address specific projects that we'll be funding. It's just the the narrative and the outline of our goals and metrics that we'll be using to choose those projects. Again, we will be continuing stakeholder engagement over the course of this project and soliciting projects hopefully in the late two thousand and twenty three. So that's the the first required document that we'll need to submit. The second one is just a copy of this public hearing. And the notice that was included online and in the newspaper. We already have the head of government letter, S F four two four, and the other documents prepared. So just a few of the the DOE federal compliance requirements that come with all federal funding. As a federal program, eligible entities and projects are subject to federal compliance requirements, including but not limited to Build America by America, sometimes referred to as BABA Davis Bacon Act, the National Environmental Policy Act of nineteen sixty nine, or NEPA. And I'll just touch on a little bit more on these, but you guys can dig into them on on these links. But BABA requires that all iron and steel used in the projects are produced in the United States. This means all manufacturing processes from the initial melting stage through the application of coatings occurred in the U S. All manufactured projects, products used in the project are produced in the United States and all construction materials are manufactured in the United States. This means that all manufacturing processes for the construction material occurred in the U S. The Buy America requirements only apply to articles, materials, and supplies that are consumed in, incorporated into, or affixed to an infrastructure project. This does not apply to tools, equipment, and supplies such as temporary scaffolding, moving furnishings that are not an integral part of the structure or permanently affixed to the project. The Davis Bacon Act is the labor and wage law. All laborers and mechanics employed by the applicant, subrecipients, or contractors in the performance of construction alteration or repair work funded in whole or in part under this FOA shall be paid wages at rates not less than those prevailing on similar projects in the locality as determined by the Secretary of Labor. And then a little bit on NEPA. All recipients and subrecipients once awarded will be required to submit an environmental questionnaire for each work location proposed in the application. If any projects are likely to require an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement, a NEPA representative will be provide will provide further documentation. Some of the special terms and conditions that come with this federal funding include reporting, tracking, and segregation of incurred costs, reporting on job creation, preservation, access to records, and whistleblower protections. So now we'll go into the draft program that Georgia has prepared. Again, this is draft, so we are soliciting feedback. We'll we'll continue to engage stakeholders throughout the year as we develop the criteria and methods for awarding funds. But I'll go into our product objectives and metrics and and we'll look forward to getting feedback from you all. Hopefully, you've already had a chance to read over the draft narrative that's available on our website and can provide comments via email or at the end of the public hearing today. So we've come up with three draft objectives. And the first objective is to improve grid resilience, develop a planning framework to address all hazards, including future climate implications for preventing outages and enhancing the resilience of the electric grid. Objective number two is to support Georgia's grid workforce. That would be investing in projects that increase and support the skilled workforce within Georgia by demonstrating standards and protections, including for direct employees, contracts, and subcontractors, professional development and training opportunities. And then the third objective is to promote grid equity. We want to invest in modernization of the grid infrastructure, enabling customer access to low-cost energy while investing in clean energy solutions that align with the Justice Forty Initiative. So the first objective to improve grid resilience, like I mentioned before, developing a planning framework to address all hazards, including future climate implications for preventing outages and enhancing the resilience of the electric grid. Sorry, let me just make sure I've got everybody out of the waiting room here. I think we're good. Okay. So the metrics again are provisional, but we'd really appreciate feedback on on these. The first one, reduce frequency and duration of outages to four main key areas, key infrastructure, priority customers, key geographic areas, and disadvantaged communities. The second one is to measure the frequency of electricity service disruptions of one or more hour to the main four areas mentioned above. And then the third one is to measure the number of hours and days that key infrastructure, priority customers, key geographic areas, and disadvantaged communities are closed due to the lack of electricity. So these are kind of impact metrics. What we aren't as familiar with as some of you may be is using the System Average Interruption Duration Index and S A I D I or SADI and the System Average Interruption Frequency Index or SAFI or equivalent data. Can we demonstrate that the project's geographic slope scope includes areas that suffer from increased frequency or duration of outage events? Are we able to show a reduced number of equipment failures? Is that something that we'd be able to measure? And then the build metric would be, can we show the number of substations that we've hardened? Can we show the miles of lines that we've maybe reconducted? And are we able to show the number of advanced switches installed? Those are some examples of metrics that DOE has suggested for this program. They have a, they will be coming out with additional guidance on possible metrics that that states can use to measure this project. But those are just a few. And I'll continue with the second objective. So the second one being to support the grid workforce. Would we be able to outline a plan to attract, train, and retain an appropriately skilled workforce, particularly those in underrepresented or historically excluded communities? Can we outline plans to partner with a training provider and the use of appropriately credentialed workforce? Measure the number of Georgians trained to operate and maintain grid resilience projects and then measure the number of locally owned businesses that develop capacity to install, operate, and/or maintain grid resilience projects. So we can measure things like the numbers of trainings funded, that's easy. Can we measure the number of energy sector jobs created? Maybe not so easy, but something we should should be doing. For the third objective promoting grid equity, are we able to reduce the frequency and likelihood of outages and disadvantages of outages in disadvantaged communities? Again, can we use the System Average Interruption Duration and Frequency indices to measure data in disadvantaged communities using the climate equity justice tool? Can we address energy justice by reporting on the likelihood of achieving zero disconnections of customers specifically in disadvantaged communities? Can we benchmark and track trends and disconnections over the last twenty years, causes and human conditions that drive disconnections and a plan to get to zero? And then megawatt hours created and or saved with the implementation of new renewables in disadvantaged communities. Another suggestion from DOE is, you know, measuring possible subawards to disadvantaged communities, potentially HBCUs. Are we able to measure the number of meetings held within a community to discuss upgrading or grid hardening in that area? So the draft evaluation criteria that we've prepared for this application are are pretty basic based on what the DOE guidance has been. So we will ensure that all all projects that receive funding will be located in the state of Georgia. All eligible entities must identify the location of the project and the community for which the project benefits and confirm that the project and its award will be solely invested in Georgia. Priority will be given to projects that generate the greatest community benefit, whether rural or urban, in reducing the likelihood and consequences of disruptive of disruptive events. And priority will be given to projects with the potential to directly strengthen or support Georgia's great resilience workforce. Something else that we want to consider is are there things we should prioritize with year one funding? Obviously, you know, we we know that we'll be getting this funding over the course of several years. What what should be the first thing we we look at doing? You know, should we break it down by year? Should we just go in with a full application for the course of over several years? We're looking for feedback there. So some of the draft methods that GIFA will use in this project include stakeholder and public review process and application development, which we're doing now. We're also going to be developing methods for soliciting, awarding, and distributing the funds. Like I mentioned, is this, you know, something we break down by priority year to year? Or in some other fashion? Will it be a competitive process? You know, will we solicit bids? Will we award based on formula? We do know that projects will enter into a contract agreement with Georgia. But sorry, with GIFA, they'll be monitored and reported on quarterly. Subrecipients will be required to provide performance and financial reporting. And award funds will be distributed on a reimbursement basis. So our draft funding distribution, and again, we will be convening stakeholders. We don't, we won't include the breakdown of amounts to each utility and in the narrative that we submit. But we know that for the first two years of funding, GIFA is expecting to receive eight million six hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars the first year and eight million six hundred and fifty five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars the second year. Two utility providers in Georgia, based on data from two thousand and twenty, sold more than four million megawatt hours of electricity per year. Georgia Power sold eighty thousand eight hundred and eighty, sorry, eighty million eight hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty seven megawatt hours per year, and Jackson EMC sold five million three hundred and thirty nine thousand six hundred and eighty nine million megawatt hours per year. They serve a combined total of two million eight hundred and fifty two thousand two hundred and forty eight customers. That's fifty seven point fifty nine percent of Georgia and will be eligible to receive up to fifty seven point fifty nine percent of the available funding, which will require a one hundred percent match. For year one, this is four million nine hundred and ninety nine thousand three hundred and thirty eight dollars and ninety five cents. For year two, four million nine hundred and eighty four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Again, these numbers will come back and confirm with the stakeholder group. But this just gives you a breakdown. The smaller EMCs and munis served a total of two million one hundred one hundred thousand three hundred and seventy four customers or forty two point four one percent. So they'll be eligible to receive not less than forty two point four one percent of the total federal funds to Georgia. And this will require a thirty three percent match. Again, this data will be reviewed and verified with stakeholder groups before projects are planned and some sub-agreements are negotiated. Regarding the state cost match, under Section four oh one oh one D subsection eight, each state is required to match fifteen percent of the total grant allocation provided. However, states may utilize excess cost match of eligible entities to cover the state's portion. So for year one, Georgia's fifteen percent match is one, I'm just going to say one point three million dollars. When when GIFA was given permission to apply for these fundings through the Office of Planning and Budget, they noted that GIFA may proceed with this program with the understanding that the state match will not be covered with state general funds, but rather can be covered by the eligible recipients. So the Energy Division at GIFA doesn't receive any state funding or match. So the the fifteen percent match will need to be absorbed by eligible entities. Therefore, those entities not classified as small utilities shall provide at least a hundred and fifteen percent in cost match of the amount of the federal award they receive. Eligible entities that are considered Eligible entities that are considered small utilities will be required to match at least 48% of the amount of the federal award they receive. Additional details on cost match information, including types and allowability, are available at the link below on the nettle DOE.gov website. So GFO's draft equity approach for this program narrative will include community benefits, quality jobs, diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. Again, priority will be given to projects that generate the greatest community benefit, whether rural or urban, and reducing the likelihood and consequences of disruptive events. Priority will be given to projects that use a diverse, local, well-trained and well-paid workforce, and projects that outline a plan to attract, train, and retain a highly skilled workforce, including opportunities for underrepresented or historically excluded workers, and those displaced by the energy transition. Subrecipient projects shall identify whether the community or area is classified as a disadvantaged community and the description of how they include, included consideration of disadvantaged communities in their decision-making process. GFO's technical assistance and administrative portion will be used to develop the process and distribute funding to, to sub recipients. GFO and/or contractors may be necessary for program administration and technical assistance. So this is the 5% funding that, that comes to GFO. We reserve the right to budget 5%. We'll track and monitor these administrative expenses and allocate any of the 5% unused towards the following year's funding. Potential partners may be contracted for expertise in transmission and distribution, tracking customer level outages, grid resilience modeling, and infrastructure interdependencies, evaluation of mitigation technologies, and more. So that is the end of our overview. We wanted to go ahead and open up for questions and public comments. Again, we all, we always encourage you to email any comments or questions to If you will need, if you want to mail public comments, you can send them to Energy Resources Division at 47 Trinity Avenue Southwest, fifth floor, Atlanta, Georgia, 30334. And I will open it up for public comments or questions.
Yeah, Kelly, this is Mike Stanley with MEAG Power.
Hey, Mike.
Hey. Not sure if you're familiar with our organization. We serve 49 communities and the state municipalities with, with power. And we've got about 8% of the states flowed out. I was just curious, you named Georgia Power and Jackson EMC. Have, have those two entities been predetermined to be sub recipients of this state of Georgia grant at this time?
No, we, we mentioned them just because they fell. When we were looking at the data from 2020, they were the only two that fell above that line for the percentage, for the, the total number of customers served.
Oh, as a large entity over the four million?
Over the four million. Yes, but again, that may not be. We'll, we'll have to verify that, yeah.
Yeah, just, I mean, MEAG, in our annual statements, I mean, MEAG Power, we serve about 11 million. But anyway, I was just curious about that. You said the recipients would be, I mean, you'd be reaching out for potential projects in late 2023. Did I hear that right?
Yeah, well, from what we've heard from DOE, you know, we'll submit the application and then we've got time to go through the process of developing, you know, our, our application review and that type of thing. So from what we heard from DOE, it won't be until later in 2023 that we're actually distributing any funding.
Okay, yeah, those were my only questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. And again, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's put their, put their information in the chat so we have everybody's contact information. Thank you.
So William III with Georgia Public Service Commission, two questions for you. First one, just to make sure, you said that, let me see if I remember. The smaller EMCs and munis can receive no less than 42% of the funding, correct? And Georgia Power and Jackson EMC will receive no more than 52 or 57%?
Yes. Well, and it's, and it's, will be made available too. So, you know, depending on interest in the program, if there's lack of interest in one area, I think we are able to come back and revise that. But that is the percentage that is made available to each of those entities, yes.
And the second question dealt with the year-to-year plans. Is there going to be a separate meeting to develop if everything is going to be submitted on a year-to-year basis? Or if everything is going to be submitted in bulk for the planning?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but it's my understanding that the funds will come out annually. The, we'll have to, we'll have to create a, a separate plan for DOE on how we're going to award, solicit, that type of thing. So I believe that we have to submit something once a year.
That's my understanding as well. The funding, it, it doesn't all come at once upfront, so it's, there's, I don't want to say risk, but there's some, it, it staggered over multiple years and there's some, there's always some chance perhaps that something might change down the road from Congress or whatever. So it's, it's not all at once.
And I've also heard that the amounts could be, could vary. I know some states may not be applying to receive the 40101D funding, so there could be an increase in amounts for states that are applying.
Right.
Thank you.
Hey Kelly, this is Josh Stallings with Georgia Power. Can you hear me okay?
Hey, Josh, yeah.
Good morning. Can, can you talk about, I'm going to drill into some of the terms from the draft proposal, if that's okay? Do you mind talking about your thoughts around the definition of terms like key infrastructure and priority customers that show up in objective one? And maybe compare that to the definition of critical facilities that shows up in the equity approach section?
Yeah. What was it? You said the key infrastructure and?
Yep, key infrastructure and priority customers.
Yeah, that is, that is up to us to define. In talking with DOE, they want, you know, states vary so much that they, they have left that up, up to us to define what we determine key infrastructure and priority customers to be. Of course, we've mentioned, you know, wanting to reach into disadvantaged communities. You know, looking at the the White House environmental justice tools to define those. But we are looking for feedback on, you know, what, what you all would define key infrastructure priority customers to be.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the, the most important part there, Josh, is, is what Kelly just said about seeking feedback about that from you all because we don't want to be so overly prescriptive that we're too limiting, especially when it's, you know, the private sector that owns mostly the private and, you know, the co-ops and et cetera, that own the infrastructure and have that technical expertise. So if you have thoughts on, on how we should define that, and if anyone else has thoughts on how we should define that, we would love to, to get your feedback on that so we can wade through that and, and see how that fits with with our thoughts on it.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. And it sounds like your answer would be similar when we talk about the term critical facilities that shows up in the approach section. Is that a good assumption?
Yeah.
Okay. And while I've got the mic open, just maybe similar question, but different terms. Objective three introduces the word disconnections. You use the word outage in other places, which led me to think that disconnection meant something different. Can you maybe just talk about what you mean? Say disconnection in that section?
Let me scroll back if you don't mind. Now, again, you know, these were kind of suggested metrics from DOE and, and possible metrics that could be used. You know, again, we're looking for a feedback from you all on creating these metrics. We can, you know, completely remove some of these if that's not a good fit. I understand the question, yeah.
Yeah, and, and this is under, I, I think there is a difference there, Josh. Because this is the one slide talking about grid equity and justice 40. And my interpretation of this from DOE is thinking about disconnections of actual disconnections from the utility due to not grid outages, but due to, you know, the other reasons, economic reasons or whatever, that a customer would get disconnected by a utility. And I don't, that's kind of a harder thing for me to wrap my mind around how this program could impact that. But it's very, made very clear by the administration that justice 40 needs to be considered in this. And certainly, this is a way that they're proposing viewing justice 40, justice 40 in this program. So I don't know how we get there on that. If anyone has suggestions. You know, whether from the utility side or any advocates out there. You know, we'd be interested in hearing that because that seems, seems like a challenge within the, the construct of this program when we're thinking about disconnections from, you know, due to people. You know, bill pay issues or those kinds of economic things. You know, how that fits in here, but, but it's, you know, language that DOE is suggesting here.
I will say, Chris, though, looking, looking through some of the other documents that DOE has provided on this, I don't see that. I don't see disconnections, achieving zero disconnections anywhere else. Just on a quick glance, so that, that may be something to consider.
That's helpful. Thank you. Thank you both.
Just to follow up on that, Josh, the only, only looking at some other sample metrics regarding justice 40. One of the policy priority states increased reliability, resilience, and infrastructure to support reliability and resilience in DACs. And then the metric examples that they give here are increase, increasing community resilience hubs in DACs and the number and size of community resilience infrastructure deployed. So yeah, again, I, I don't see the disconnect, just disconnections in here, so that's a good, good catch. Anything else anybody wants to, want me to move back to any of the slides specifically or any additional questions?
Yes, if you could go back to objective two, please. Yes, is there going to be, what did I say, outline plans to partner with the training provider, labor, or community college? But is there currently any any existing plan right now for which potential colleges could receive some type of funding or some type of cannot think of the word right now. Some type of funding or partnership through this program to help shore up the labor force or help with retraining right now?
I think, I think that would be what we would be soliciting in the next kind of round or the next process for this. We'd be soliciting interest or, you know, submit an RFP or for interested parties to apply for this funding to do that. We, I think in our original draft narrative, we mentioned some partners that we've worked with in the past on workforce development projects. But certainly, you know, it's not limited to any, and we would encourage, you know, a diverse geographical, you know, different types of schools or colleges to apply for that.
Okay. And the funding for the training, of course, will be coming from the potential eight million.
Correct, yes. I'm just gonna ask a quick question on this one regarding impact on improving grid resilience. So I mentioned the system average interruption duration index and frequency index. And being, you know, not familiar with those or how those are measured or the data that, that is captured there. Is that something maybe Georgia Power and MEAG? Is that something that is available or accessible to all of the smaller utilities? Or is that something that, you know, everyone is reporting on or, or measuring statewide? Maybe Chris knows I'm not as familiar with that.
Hey, this is Josh from Georgia Power. I can start with a potential answer. Hey, this is Josh from Georgia Power. I can start with a potential answer there. I, I describe those metrics this way, they, for us, speaking only for us, they are readily accessible, readily available, the data is readily available. Typically reported on very common metrics that we use in our planning processes. They generally cover a geographic footprint of varying size. So we can have a, a company-level SADI and safety metric. And all the way down to, let's say, a what we would call a distribution feeder SADI and safety metric, you can think about, that's the the, the set of poles and conductor that serve some small subset of customers in an area. It's, it's not really a metric designed to apply to a single customer. More of a group of customers over some geographic footprint over some period of time. I, I probably better let MEAG comment on, on their, their take on the use of those metrics individually. But at a high level, that's how we view them.
Yeah, this is Mike Stanley. To be honest, I don't work in the, in the, in the O and M department, but I, I have seen those numbers. I do think they are readily available. And I know we track them, you know, within our company and you know, you know, I want to say probably at the participant level, you know, we, like I said, we serve forty nine participants, but I, I can't guarantee that. I'm not an expert in that particular subject as far as those metrics, to be honest. But I do know we, you know, I have seen those published for, for MEAG's reliability.
Okay.
So maybe just a little bit more perspective, you know, if, if you think about a if, if the typical, if we're if we're demarcating communities, and by that I mean, you know, a disadvantaged community versus non. And if, if those are sort of outlined by zip code or census tract or something like that, depending on where you are in the state, there, you know, I mentioned this distribution feeder term a minute ago. There, there could be multiple of those in a single quote-unquote community. It would be harder to measure. It would be very difficult to measure SADI and safety kind of at a census tract or zip code level. That would be foreign to us to organize the data that way.
I got you.
Yeah, I would agree with that same comment from MEAG's perspective. Like I said, I, I think, you know, we probably look, I know we look at it company-wide, probably at the participant level, but certainly, you know, not, you know, not at the zip code level, exactly.
Okay. All right, and then just one, a question, if there's any environmental justice organizations or anyone who's, who could speak on behalf regarding the equity portion of this hearing and, and these metrics. You know, we're looking to to impact disadvantaged communities and, and again, you know, we haven't quite defined. And, and we will, you know, really where we're looking ahead, if we're using that tool, are we drilling down based on energy burden or what we want to look at? But any feedback regarding equity, you know, reaching out to schedule meetings in disadvantaged communities about grid hardening, grid infrastructure, any feedback on that, if there's anybody on the call? Go ahead. Somebody.
Hi, I'm Carrie. I'm with Seven Alliance for Clean Energy, and I just would, would be happy to. I know some folks that are working locally in my town and some other places around Georgia that would, I, I think would be really interested to have some discussions. I'm not prepared to, you know, speak directly about their efforts or, or what might help right now, but I would love to, you know, help, help get in, help you get in touch or help them get in touch with y'all to discuss this more.
Excellent. Yeah, we can set that up. Thanks, Carrie. Okay, any other public comments or questions?
Yes, one last question. So I'm currently looking on the screening tool link that was provided. And, and there they label certain communities or areas as identified as disadvantaged or not disadvantaged. Is this the tool that we're going to use to define what areas disadvantaged or not disadvantaged? Or are there additional criteria that the state will be able to use?
Where we would welcome any feedback on that.
Okay.
Okay, well, hearing no more comments. I encourage you, let me see if I can get down to the you know, just the
Can I ask one more question? I think this was probably shared earlier, but what's the deadline for public comment or input on this?
Yes, we would like to receive feedback. The deadline for a public comment on this is Friday, March seventeenth at four P M. The email address is up on the screen, energyresources@gifa.gov. I will add that while the deadline for public comment is soon, we will continue stakeholder engagement over the next year and likely more. So, you know, we hope that you all stay engaged and involved as we continue developing this program to prevent outages and enhance grid resilience here in Georgia. You know, you can also, this email address comes to both Chris and I. You can reach out to us directly. We have a, a link on our website under, if you go to GIFA Energy Resources bipartisan infrastructure law. You can find about, out more about our other programs that will be coming through GIFA for the bipartisan infrastructure law. And then at the bottom of the page is a link to the draft program narrative. And that's also where we will post the slides from today as well as the draft narrative and updates to the draft narrative, so. All right, well, we appreciate your time today with us. And again, encourage you to look over the narrative, provide any feedback that you're able to to energyresources@gifa.gov by Friday, March seventeenth at four P M. And we look forward to hearing back from you. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.